Calling the meeting to order of the Winter School Committee. Patty, could you please do the roll call?
Mr. Boncorby?
Here.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Present.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Present. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kapabianco, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing for a moment of silence for Yvette Dans, a big supporter of the Winter Public Schools system and the athletic teams. Thank you. Any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. No delegates or visitors tonight, scheduled. Can I have a motion for the minutes of February 10th, 2020?
Second.
So Ms. Swope makes the motion. Who is, who seconded?
Boncorby.
Mr. Boncorby seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes.
One abstention.
And one abstention because Mr. Kapabianco was not present. Okay, financial business procedures. Can I get a, a motion for the warrant, SVW 20-14, the amount of $203,072.83? Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Matucci and second by Ms. Powell. Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Hearing none, it passes. Payroll warrant, SPW 20-14, the amount of $707,667.57. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Powell makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kapabianco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Should some of these be roll call votes when they're that kind of, the money, I mean, in the town, anything over 25,000, we have to take a roll call?
Yeah, it's not part of our charter.
We can check that out.
We can check the charter. At this point, it's, it's always been that way. We always have the budget itself in the packet to review it. If there's any questions, people usually just raise the issue at that time. But we can check on it.
No questions, I just didn't know, we do procedure.
Okay, budget transfers in the amount of $203,388 and another one in the amount of $78,088.98. Would we like to take those together? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to take those two transfers together.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kapabianco, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? None. It passes. Buildings and grounds, can I get a motion for the Winter Middle School PTO, full court frenzy?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Kapabianco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, it passes. Okay, subcommittee reports. Do we have anyone from Budget to report on today's meeting?
Yes. Had a meeting just before this meeting with the Budget Subcommittee and there was just one vote taken and that was to increase preschool tuition. And I'll go over those numbers now because I'm gonna, wanna get a motion on this to move forward anyways. So it'll be for preschool tuition for full day, we'll go from 6,000 to 6,200. Three day, from 3,600 to 3,720. Two day, from 2,400 to 2,480. And AM preschool will go from 3,000 to 3,100. So would like to get a motion on that if we could.
Make the motion.
Mr. Kapabianco makes the motion to accept the recommendation of the, the Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee, seconded by Ms. Powell.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask question about the motion? So Superintendent Howard, last year we created a payment plan for this and a sort of, I think, is there a scholarship program for those that can't afford it? I just wanna make sure if those are still...
So there's, what we created was an online payment as opposed to paying it all at once or in three installments. We did a monthly installment where parents can go on and pay a smaller fee per month through the Town Hall information system, correct?
Correct.
That's what it is. And it just allows parents to spread those payments out over the course of 10 months.
10 months, yep.
It's made it much easier.
Real quickly, this, this is in line with what most schools are doing. It's actually less than what most schools...
It's actually less, we looked at, I shouldn't say we, the PPS Director and Principal of the Gorman Fort Banks looked at other public schools to do a comparison and we are still less than the other public schools. And different public schools have larger programs, some have larger, some have smaller. Ours is not a huge program. It's based on the teachers that we currently have in the system and we're able to add some seats into those to make it an integrated preschool.
Awesome.
How does it compare with the other preschool programs that are in town?
So the in-town programs, depending upon, so there's several, we have several daycares and preschools within the town and comparatively we're, we're, we run a, it's hard to compare it because you have to compare apples to apples, but if you're comparing full day, a full day preschool for us ends around 1:45 where some preschools in the community will, you know, provide service till 5:00 PM. We're still, we're still dollar for dollar less, but, you know, we, and we offer different options. We have a three-day program, we have a two-day program, we have a five-day full-day program and we have a morning session for our students. So comparatively, price-wise, we're still below. We have a different timeframe too, so we run school year and many of the preschools in town run for the entire school year, so it's really based on parental preference and need.
Lisa, do you know when the last time this was increased?
So we went back, at least five, it's been at least five years since we've increased. That's how far back Susan and I were looking. We didn't go back any further than that.
Okay.
We figured at that point, in five years, it was time to increase it a bit to cover the cost of needs.
Okay, superintendents' report?
Do you have to take a vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had voted on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Superintendents' report?
Yes, so in your packet, I provided you with quite a bit of paper this week, so I wanted to highlight a few things. The budget discussion forum, so this year I put in place a parent budget discussion forum to seek some input from our parents regarding their wants and needs for the school district as well as to gain an understanding from our parents as to what they know about the budget process and to be able to share with them the deep level work that has gone on the past few years with administration and teachers alike to build the school's budget each year. So far, I've had two sessions. My attendance at my sessions is growing. I am hopeful that the next session, which is March 3rd at 6 o'clock here at the high school, that that parent group will be a bit larger and if need be, I can continue to do it even beyond the budget so that parents have an understanding. Received some great questions, lots of parents that, that we have spoken with and that have asked for additional feedback, some parents who couldn't attend and had some questions about the budget. It was eye-opening for me what parents don't understand about the school budget. So I think the education about how we build the budget was super helpful to them and then just hearing back from them either during that session or by email after what some priorities they had for the school budget would be. Typically, it's dependent upon what age level the student is at and what that parent might be advocating for and I will bring that information back to my administrative team so that they can hear what the parents are asking for. We have a budget survey ready to go out to parents as well via email, it's a Google survey, the parents will be able, who couldn't attend the sessions will be able to weigh in and we plan to post that on Thursday. I put also in your packet an updated budget calendar, so it just walks you through what we're doing as a school in terms of the dates for subcommittee meetings, the parent input sessions, and then as we move forward, presentations to the town, FinCom and the like. So that's updated in your packet for those who would like to attend. Professional development, professional development in Winter Public Schools has been a very streamlined process this year in where our strategic plan is driving all of the activities that we do during half-days or full-day professional development as well as professional development opportunities that we're offering after school. So I provided you with the early release date of February 25th, what is happening, what had happened on that day, so you can take a peek at that. Everything from PBIS intervention, which is our positive behavioral system to help support students in a positive way with their needs, de-escalation and safety care training, Renaissance, which is one of our online platforms, teaching, our teachers how to navigate Renaissance and several amounts of UBD, which is planning with Rennie Carter, who is, comes from an educational consultant firm, teaching and working with our high school staff on mapping the curriculum, creating curriculum maps and unit plans. And then a couple of other things that have been happening that are pretty cool. Sandy Hook Promise Club is coming out this week and they are working with our staff on training, several of our staff members, 15 at last count, on understanding the signs of suicide and where they are coming up to us free of charge through a grant that I've spoken to you about earlier through, through the state, through the DA's office and they're coming out to train our staff on how to recognize the signs of suicide, but they're training them as trainers. So the information and the training that they go through will allow them to then train classroom teachers on recognizing signs of suicide and conducting assessments on students, which ties into our threat assessment team. So just some deeper work on recognizing our student needs and making sure that we're able to then train our own staff. So that's pretty exciting. We also had our administration participate in a program offered by MCAD, which is the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, in which they came out and worked with our staff on identifying and learning and understanding what discrimination is in the workplace and what harassment is in the workplace and giving tips and some legal advice on how to avoid any level of discrimination or harassment in, in the workplace, which is super helpful for everybody to have an update on that. I participated in it as well and learned some new things for myself. It's forever-changing world, so it's helpful to keep up to date on that. The coronavirus has certainly been a hot topic on television, in social media, in my email inbox and outbox and we, I drafted a letter last week that went home to all of our families. I totally understand families being concerned about this. Every time you turn the television on, there is another discussion about the coronavirus. So the letter that was drafted for parents came from discussions with DPH as well as other school superintendents on giving parents facts. As a school district, we're continuing to disinfect our schools as we do during every flu season and anytime there is a heightened awareness of a new strain of flu or a new virus that might be out there, we pay particular attention to what DPH is telling us. We receive our information from the town nurse. Meredith Hurley is very strong with communication and is on the phone with me weekly if not every other day. And now with the new concerns around the coronavirus, information that she receives, she speaks with DPH on a daily basis for the town and so she shares any updates. We're following their protocols. They are the experts in the area of virus and health-related information and they are extremely attentive to schools and so they provide her with information that she feel, that they feel is necessary for the school as they're doing across the entire state and, and then Meredith in turn provides that to me. That then goes to the school nurses and the school nurses push that out to the principals and anything that needs to be done or is being recommended by DPH in terms of facility management, we loop our facilities manager in and the custodians to take action on that. So hopefully, parents are aware of the information, they have, certainly have links that we have sent them so that if they want to do some research on their own, complete with a contact at CDC. And, just a couple of little updates, Gorman Fort Banks School, the slide is broken. I want people to know that because slides are, and playgrounds are something that all of our children access. So the slide has been closed. We are checking with the maintenance agreement on that particular playground, so it's the back playground, not the Mariana Fabiano playground, but the playground behind that. We believe this slide is under warranty. We have closed it off to avoid students receiving any injury on that slide and hopefully we will have a replacement slide in the near future. We're trying to see if it is covered under warranty and hopefully that will be fixed soon. Other items. Negotiations are continuing. We have several units that we need to complete. As you know, we've done the teachers' union. We now have other unions within the public school to finish, so the nurses, the ESP contract, secretary contract, administration contract and the custodial contract. I've received some dates from our school attorney and the WTA attorney for the nurses, ESPs and secretaries. I will send those dates out to the subcommittees who are involved in that negotiation to see if we can get an agreed-upon time to complete those. The administration and the custodial unit will be soon thereafter, so we will get some dates out to those subcommittees as well. Joint Labor Committee on Teacher Start and End Time was an agreement that was made in, with the teachers' union, that we would put together a joint labor committee to review their request for start and end times for teachers only, not for students. So we, we do need to sit down as a group to further review what their request was initially. It was not part of the bargaining in the, in the end, in the negotiation settling, but we did agree to sit down to see if there were some adjustments we would be able to make. The impact of any change in a teacher's start and end time has a direct impact on student, student start and end times in terms of making sure we have enough people available to watch our students as well as some concerns from the town side, the police and fire around traffic. So we've got a committee going and we have several people on the committee. We'll have three or four sessions to discuss that. There may or may not be a change in the teacher's start and end times, but there, at this point, we do not see changes for 2021 in students that would be anything more than a few minutes at this point. But that subcommittee is specific to teacher's start and end times. And NEASNC update, Mr. Crombie came out and gave the NEASNC report to you, so I wanted just to bring you up to speed every few weeks so that you know exactly where we're at. UBD, Roney Carter, the educational consultant who I spoke of earlier, met with all the departments at the last full-day professional development and they're in stage two of their understanding by design, creating curriculum maps and pacing guides and unit assessments for high school, all high school classes, nine through 12. The consultant provided individual attention to the content teachers on this day regarding their progress on the plan. So when they had, when she meets with them, she's here for the full school year, whatever work she does with them, when she leaves, she comes back, but she's giving teachers homework. So they have lots of work to do in between sessions with her and she comes back and reviews that work. The vision of the high school graduate, which is another point that NEASNC had asked us to focus on, that has been completed by the team of folks who got together to work on that project and it's now headed to the site council and to the building staff for their review and input for a final draft of that. And the library media specialist, which was the third point with NEASNC, we're in the process of defining that role and how that would look in Winter Public Schools next year as well as looking at our media center space that was designed as the new school building project and what is going to be necessary to be incorporated into that space as, as part of the actual library media center. So that is still a work in progress. I anticipate we're gonna have several more sessions in talking about what that may look like in the end. And one last point, Educacious is the company that works with the public school for our students, foreign language students that come to Winter High School and are tuitioned here. So they go through the company called Educacious and they come from other countries to come to school here and they do all of the work in terms of bringing the students to us, paying the school district for those students to attend here. And I just wanted to make sure I made the point well-known that with the coronavirus concerns that we have, we are working very closely with them to make sure that they are also following the guidelines of CDC and the notification to the town and, and when students leave us, if they go on vacation, have they gone back to their country and is it a country that there is any concern of? And the state keeps, has a lot of control over that too in terms of notifying schools when students do leave the country or anybody leaves the country. The town itself gets notification if there is any concern. So I wanted, there were some questions that came across my desk this week about whether or not we were in communication with Educacious and the answer to that question is yes. And that is it for my report for this week.
Anything under personnel, appointments, resignations, retirements, postings or leave of absence?
So under personnel, I put in your packet the final job description that was posted for the Director of Finance and Administrative Affairs, otherwise known as a Business Manager for the Winter Public Schools. That is posted on School Spring as well as with the Mass School Business Authority and we are receiving resumes as we speak and once we have a handful of resumes, I will be coming back to the committee to discuss a group to review those resumes and begin the process of interviewing staff for that position. It's a school committee-approved position, so once the committee that's going to do the interviews would come back to the school committee with a recommendation for hire and that would be the school committee's role to approve that recommendation. And it's also in your packet a long-term substitute for an eighth-grade ELA teacher. And I believe that was it under personnel.
Anything under unfinished business, the open seat on the school committee? We have a date for that joint meeting with the council. I believe it's March?
10th.
10th, yes.
March 10th.
Yeah, we've received any other resumes or?
So as of right now, as of Friday, I shouldn't say right now, but as of Friday, the school district had not received any and the town, I believe, had received one. We encourage anybody who still would like to participate in that process to reach out to us, but there'll be a joint meeting with the town council and the school committee on the 10th to appoint that seat, if I'm correct in the way I'm saying that. It's an appointment, correct? A vote to appoint?
Yeah, I believe it's at 7.
The 7th? We couldn't look it up. I thought it was the 7th, but...
Let me check.
I think it's the 10th at 7. That's what you're saying. The 10th at 7? At the Harvey Room?
Right. Any update on the textbook material discount request?
So we're just leaving that on that agenda until we complete that list.
Okay. Any public comment this evening? Hearing none, moving...
Your public relations.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought you were going into public relations.
I'm sorry, public, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm right, you're right.
Public Relations?
Yes, I would like to offer congratulations to the Winthrop Drama Society. Our students performing ballin' have moved on to the next level of the competition along with getting a number of awards, which was very exciting. The next competition will be on March 14th in Danvers and that is open to the public if people want to go and see our students. Excellent. And I also would like to commend our custodial staff for their work on Saturday. I was here and got to see firsthand how well they did taking care of our school and making sure that everybody had what they needed.
Awesome.
That's awesome. Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Matucci? Mr. Kapabianco?
How about we congratulate the girls' basketball team for making it to the semifinals? I guess they're playing?
Tomorrow night? Tomorrow night, tomorrow night in Wakefield, I believe.
That's exciting that we got a team.
That is very exciting.
In the semifinal.
Anything further, Mr. President? Ms. Swope?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to report on the, the work that Lori and Matt and I did as a follow-up to the meeting that we had the last time accreditation and they were willing to meet with me as I had, as I, I shared with you all a series of questions that would take more time than certainly Matt had while he was here. And I thought that the conversation was, was excellent and quite frank and quite open. Lisa covered several things, but one of the things that, as an outcome of that meeting that I was hoping to happen and Lisa had mentioned that she's gonna do it, to have a report, during Lisa's report, on how we're doing on this accreditation and how well we're, you know, moving along so that we come out in a spectacular way. I think both of the two elements, that the two foundational elements that we did not meet will be met by the time that they come, I think, on April 2021. And I think we're making a lot of progress on that and thank goodness for Lori because her work with understanding by design and the consultant is just so spectacular. I think the reason we couldn't do it before this time and why we kind of got behind is we moved into a new building and that took a lot of time to get organized.
And we didn't have a director of curriculum and instruction for a period of time.
And we didn't have a director of curriculum and we were moving. So now that we're full force into this, I think this will be a tremendous help. One of the priority areas also that, that NEASC mentioned was this notion of having library services that support student learning for adequate, for adequate learning and have a certified person in there. I thought, I thought when Matt talked about this because I believe we asked if it could be handled technologically or do we really need a person in there? And I said, I just wanted some clarification from him. And his point was that he, he knows he's gonna do everything we can technologically, but we really need a person if we can get it. So he's been working on that and maybe we can share that person with the middle school. Maybe we can find a teacher that has dual certification, but anyway, he's not gonna give up on that because it is really, I think, tremendously critical for students to have somebody to turn to, particularly for the area of research and et cetera. The, the survey that was given by the NEASC committee, they, they interviewed teachers, they interviewed students, they interviewed parents and the information that was collected, of course, it was 2019, April, so that's almost a year old. But some of the scores were kind of disappointing. If only 36% of the staff feel that collaborative planning time was helpful and only 32 were familiar, the staff were familiar with the school's improvement plan and 38 feel that they had a role in its implementation, that's low. But I, Matt has suggested, and I think it's a great idea, that he finds some of the materials that were given out at the, for those NEASC questions and we do some samples of those. We run some surveys and so we keep up with that and we know how well we're communicating all of these great plans that we're making with staff and students and teachers and parents. So I think that will significantly improve. And on, to end on a very positive note, I thought that NEASC report made some comments that I was, touched my heart about school caring culture, safe environment, high standards for civic engagement, et cetera. And that, that's a nice thing to hear. So I think we'll keep on track with Lisa reporting out and I can't wait to hear all the good work.
Great, thank you.
Jim, yes, something I just slipped my mind. At the last council meeting, I assigned a Subcommittee on Public Safety the job of looking for an access road from the Gorman Fort Bank School. It's one of my priorities in my administration for the next two years is to formulate an access road to alleviate that loop problem that we've had for so many years and hopefully alleviate the traffic that we have on Revere Street as well. So that committee is, has been, is going to be working on it. I believe they're having a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Hobby.
Is that the TSAC?
No, it's not TSAC. It's the Subcommittee of the Council on Public Safety.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully, TSAC will be involved.
Do you know if they have, is, is the principal of the Gorman Fort Banks or anyone involved in that or is it just as a...
Not yet. That's why I'm bringing it up because I think that, I'm sure... That's why I'm bringing it up, because I think that, uh, I'm sure she wants to be.
Okay. I'll let her know about it, so that she's aware of it. Great, thank you.
That's great news. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
All those in favor? Aye.